Is he gonna turn it off?
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
I should do that now. Alright, well it's four o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody's sent a copy of the agenda, this is just intended as a board planning session. There'll be no motions made tonight, no votes taken on anything. The purpose is to, with the teachers have voiced that they would like to have a more of a say in what we're looking, what they are looking for in a superintendent. So, I believe when we come out of here tonight, our plan will be to have another meeting in the near future with some teacher representatives to be determined by us, them, you know, we're just gonna hash that out tonight, figure out what kind of information we're looking from them, how that meeting is gonna, gonna play out. So, like I said, the purpose of this is just to put some, make some ground, get some ground rules, just figure out how that meeting's gonna work. You know, we can't just show up and say, "Let's have a meeting." I don't think it would be productive if we had a meeting with, say, just said, "Come one, come all, let's see what happens." I don't, I don't think anybody here believes that that would be a productive meeting. We need to, we need to kinda lay out some groundwork for that, to begin with. So, that's just the purpose of our meeting tonight, is to come up with that groundwork. I've talked to, and you guys have got a list of stuff here, some, some teachers, apparently they, they didn't feel that there was enough time whenever they met with Mr. Watkins a week or two ago, that everybody got to voice their concerns, or not so much concerns, their wants for a new superintendent, what, what they would like to see in a superintendent. So, we've got a list here, some, some people that wrote. Aaron Brower and Glenn Moore have both been in contact with me since we decided to have this meeting. They're kinda, I don't wanna say that they're gonna spearhead it, but they've kinda stepped up, and I think they're willing to help us. They're both kinda in a neutral area there, where they're not really representing a, a teacher's group, or a grade level, or a building, or, I, I feel that they're, they're both just kinda on neutral ground there. So, they've kinda stepped up and are willing to help us in whatever fashion that we need. This is, this is some, some teachers that sent some stuff to Aaron, or Glenn, one, I don't know, one of them, that didn't get to speak at the, didn't get to talk to Mr. Watkins the other night, so that's kinda what that is. You guys can look at that, I think everybody's been reading on it here the last few minutes, but if we can look that over, take what, what Mr. Watkins has told us, is, the other day, we didn't get into that very deep, but I feel we will, when we start looking at applications here, in January sometime, but he'll have some ideas about what they said there, here's some more ideas, I kinda figure we'll have, we'll get some thoughts, that's the purpose of the meeting we'll have, down the road here in a week or so. So, with that being said, you know, I guess I open it up to whoever wants to go first, y'all have had some time to think and reflect on this, to figure out what this meeting should look like. I'll let you guys take it from there. I'll be trying to take notes and put something together about what we, what we wanna do moving forward. Anybody wanna go first? Or just like?
I think, I'll, I'll say something first, but, you know, something I think is obviously important is that they are represented. And so, finding a way to, that they feel like whoever it is that meets with us is truly representing them. So, you, you know, we've got different areas of the school, and so each area, whether we go by a building, or grade levels, or, or what, you know, each group needs to be represented. You know, you can't do it one from every grade level maybe, but, but from the buildings and, and departments. For example, special ed is a department that ought to be heard from, I think, and athletics, or physical education, but, so that, that's the main thing that I think we need to do, is make sure everyone feels like they're represented. And I don't know if there's a technical point in doing that, but...
May do that.
End up with a lot of subgroups.
Yeah. I would hope that, say, one or two people from a building could take, could make sure all that's done. I mean, I don't think we can, like you said, I don't think we can have fifteen people in here, you know, but I would think that, that they would be able to choose someone that they trust, to have, you know, what is they wanna be? Well, they want us to hear, you know?
And get that information to those people, and...
And then...
Originally, you know, I, I thought about this, and I thought, you know, okay, so if we pick, you know, an elementary, you start, I, I don't think it's fair, I don't wanna pick the people, we don't wanna, we as a board don't wanna pick the people. I don't think we want the principals to pick the people, that's not right. The teachers are gonna have to do this themselves, I believe, you know, and I think, I think they're a well enough rounded group, they can, they can do that, they'll, they'll figure it out. I think we, I blow an email out to the staff, or to, give it to Aaron and Glenn, and they blow it out to them, they'll, they'll come together and figure out who their, who their people need to be, and get the ideas to them, but at first I started thinking, you know, if we, if we do it with, okay, we pick the elementary, we say the elementary, and then we have a group from the middle school, and we say a group from the high school, okay, well then, you know, we can end up with so many groups, and we start talking about athletics, or special ed, or what about the support staff, and, you know, there's, we can go down, and, I mean, if we start going, and we're gonna say the bus drivers, and the janitors, you know, we get, we can get, I'm afraid we can go too far with that, is, is my personal...
Those things, you did it all in one sitting, or you reckon it happened through four nights?
No, I spent one night. My thoughts.
Well, I, I like what you said about the teachers, I think, they can figure that out, to me, I think that they can come up with a fair couple of building, or whatever it is they wanna come up with, and then they make sure that they have included everyone, I would think, I don't know, I, I just think that, and you've got some, you've got, we've got some good people, and I'm sure it'll be very fair, and, and listen to what, what their, how the teachers have to say.
So, are we thinking, you know, I'll listen to the rest of you, but are we thinking a couple people from each building, from the three buildings?
I don't think so, they compile the information from the teachers, to...
What is, what is it we're, what is it we're trying to, I mean, what's the objective, I guess?
The, the teachers don't, they, they don't feel that they've had their voice heard on what they desire in the next superintendent. They don't feel that the meeting with MSBA, well, a week ago, week and a half ago, whenever that was, was productive, that Bob wasn't listening to them real well, there wasn't enough time, for one, they said, and, and it was kind of on where they felt like they were just, it was, he was going through the motions. So, they don't feel that we're gonna get, get a good representation from what he got out of that meeting. Is, is the feeling I have. Does anybody else have a different feeling, a point, you know, I've heard from a couple of you over the last week, but if somebody else has something to say, don't, don't let me be the killing man up here.
I just, I went over the, I mean, we've got a thirty-two page review here, I've gone over it in some detail, and tried to analyze pages and pages and pages of comments by literally hundreds of staff and community members, and it's very difficult to put anything actionable down there, okay? When you go, "What is in this document that will help me hire a superintendent? What, you know, what I don't see, or skill sets like strategic planning, and budget building, communication, willingness to learn how to effectively work with a board, and ability to share data, and evaluate effective instruction, and it, it seems to me like those are key areas that we're gonna be looking at to hire somebody who's qualified for this job." So, I mean, I don't wanna make sure we're not looking at a popularity contest, that we're looking for skills. So, is there, is there, because when you go through this document, it, there's not a ton of skill listings in here, I mean, if anybody's spent any time with it. And, and so, I, I get that they feel like the meeting with Bob wasn't effective, and I don't have any objection to having a meeting, because they deserve to be heard, and if he didn't satisfy that need, then we have the responsibility to do that. But I, I want it to be something more than just...
I think you just made the case, right there, I mean, 'cause that's what this document tells me from what I've read, that they haven't been heard, and...
This document, the one, the one you've got today?
Right.
Right, unfortunately...
And what we've said, or what we're doing, is we're giving them an opportunity to be heard.
Okay, now what I'm saying is...
I don't know if that identifies specific characteristics, I mean, we don't know what they're gonna bring to us as far as they want.
Right, but if, if all they're gonna bring is another thirty-two pages of this, it's not gonna do any good, is my point. I, I'd be happy to hear from them, but we need to have something that helps us move the bar. I mean, we've gotta be able to have something actionable out of it.
I get what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna go through the motions and go, "Okay, now you've been heard, and, and we don't have anything to act on from them." Because, have they really been heard then? If we don't have anything actionable? Does that make sense? So, I, I just, I don't care how, how they choose who, who the representatives are, but we've gotta be better than this, where we can't even sign our work. I mean, there's nothing bad in here, there's nothing in here that somebody shouldn't have felt like, I mean, I would've signed every one of these. I, I don't disagree with anything in there, in, in large part, but, but we have to have somebody who is going to be represented, and we can't meet with a hundred and eighteen certified teachers and, and ninety-two staff.
Well, I mean, I don't need a name to know that these are qualities that they want. I mean, some, these are groups of people, people that are putting this out there, I mean, they obviously, for whatever reason, didn't feel comfortable putting their name on there, that doesn't devalue this document and what they're putting on it.
I, I don't disagree, but I think you're gonna have a hard time taking this document and hiring somebody to it.
I mean, if we agree to meet with them, we really don't have any control on what they bring to us.
I think that's the point.
I, I, I know that's the point I'm making, I mean, they're, they're gonna bring the information they want, and it's up to us to use it, or listen to it, or, you know...
Right, it's up to them to provide something that's actionable, not up to us.
Okay, so we're just gonna...
We're there to listen to them.
We're just gonna sit there and passively listen and, and...
Well, that's what they've asked of us.
Well, I, I don't know what they've asked of us, all I know is, Tony called the meeting, and nobody's asking anything of me.
Well, I mean, if they, I mean, am I wrong, did they ask to be heard by the board?
They asked to be heard by the board, and, and kinda what I've conveyed, my opinion at this time is, you know, I, I want, whatever they bring, it's gotta be productive. I don't, I, I don't want them to come, and we can't have a, a two-hour meeting, telling us where we've been, and we don't wanna go there again. You know, if they've got, we, we need to know where we're going. This meeting needs to look forward, not in the rearview mirror, is, is my opinion.
They need to be able to talk openly too, not afraid of stuff, I mean, if they have something to say, they, they need to know they can say it.
Well, I mean, they, they should be able to know that, I mean, there's, there's nobody here that's gonna take, you know, no reason they can't say what they wanna say.
The, the, the value I see in this meeting is we may not come out of it with anything actionable, anything hardcore, but the most important asset that we have in this community is our people, and, and in this school, is, is our people. The ones that go into classrooms, the ones that drive the bus, the ones that serve the meals, but it's our people. And if we can build, or improve on the, the level of trust that we have between them, and the administration, and us, to where they feel valued, and I think the reason that some of these people don't sign their names is because, as they've said in here, they feel like if they've complained about things, then people suffer. And, and so, whenever that, you know, if, if that's true, then there's, there's a problem with trust. And, and even if we aren't, you know, able to come up with any hardcore facts to, you know, aid us in hiring a superintendent, although I think that right there tells us something, I still think that just the value of the meeting in support of our people is, is worth it. And, yeah, I think just hearing them is the important part.
I don't disagree with you, Tony, on the fact that we need to be forward-looking. It has to be productive, if, if, if we're just gonna rehash five years of what, you know, this or that, I mean, that's gone, we're looking forward, we've gotta hire a new superintendent. I, I don't think, we probably don't know all the details, but I'd say we probably got an inclination of where we've missed the mark, where the schools missed the mark, where, you know, where things that have happened, that's with any situation, any administration, or any group that's trying to do anything. So, I do think we need to have forward-looking, productive conversations, I agree with that one hundred percent. But I, I don't, I understand what you're saying, but I, I think that there's value in opening those lines of communication. Obviously, there's a break somewhere up that chain, to where they have felt where they're not getting what they need out of the situation. And if what they need out of the situation is to come to us and have a conversation, I mean, I think that's, it didn't cost us a dime, it gains us a lot, I think.
I agree, I, I don't object to the meeting, I don't object to the meeting. What I don't want it to be is where they come in, and they lay it all out, and we just sit here and go, "Okay, well, we did that, mark that off our list." I don't want it to be a, I mean, I want it, I want it to mean something. I don't want it to be just a checkbox, "Okay, you feel better now because we marked off that box."
That's up to us.
Yeah, that's up to us.
That's up to us, so, we're not just, we're not passively, I mean, we're actively...
You've gotta have, you gotta have something actionable to work on.
Right.
Hopefully, so it's not just up to us. That's, that's why I'm saying is, we have to make sure that we communicate some way, whoever these leaders are that are gonna come and, and bring their suggestions, not grievances...
I think that's a good...
But, but, but we need to make sure that they understand that what we need is actionable stuff, right? Because it's gotta be presented in a way that we can act on it, because if it's not, then we can't act on it. That's, that's all I'm saying. So, I, I mean, it has to, it has to work both sides.
Just give me, can, can you give me an example of a non-actionable thing?
Well, I mean, I can, I can give you, in this, in this document here, there's, there's, there's statements one direction, and then a statement four pages later, exactly the opposite. This document here, you could go through it for hours. I mean, our, our greatest strength in the district is our teachers, our biggest failure is our teachers.
To clarify, you're looking at the, the survey that was sent out by MSBA, is that correct? Is that the document?
That one too, but even, even this document has got some back and forth, I mean, you know, so not everybody agrees on everything, so your representative's gotta come there, and, you know, it's not gonna make everybody happy, so...
I mean, it isn't, is, but...
Right.
But again, what's an action, what's an example of an actionable thing, and what's an example of a non-actionable?
Well, an actionable thing is gonna be something that you can measure in a candidate. So, this candidate has experience in this, and has demonstrated it by doing that, right? That's, that's, that's the interview process when you hire somebody, is you look for skill sets. So, what we have to do is identify, I mean, I, I think a very good use of our time would be to identify the skill sets that we're looking for in a superintendent, and then devise a set of questions that identify and allow candidates to express their capability in those areas, right? So, if we can get this information from this group of teachers, right, on top of our own input, right, because, let's face it, this is what our job is here. I mean, all the other stuff that we do all year long is important, but our primary job is to hire and manage a superintendent, not the school. So, I mean, this is what we're supposed to be doing. So, I think listening to what is important to the teachers is important, and if they don't feel heard, then they should be, but at the end of the day, this is the responsibility of everyone around this room to identify skill sets and hire somebody who's, who's got a chance of being effective.
Well, I mean, when it, when they say a superintendent that would value teachers, okay, I think the question would be, what are examples of a way that a superintendent would value teachers? I mean, those are, I mean, I, I just, I don't...
So, I mean, do you think that when you interview ten people, you're gonna have somebody stand up and go, "No, I don't value teachers, I don't think they're important?"
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying whenever you, whenever a teacher's presenting, I think we're hashing that out and discussing that, one of the things would be, "Okay, you want him to, or her, or whatever, to value teachers, what would be a way that you see a superintendent values teachers?" And then we can glean some knowledge off of however they, you know...
Okay, so those are the questions we need to ask the teachers that...
Well, I, I don't know, I don't even know that we're asking teachers in this meeting, or if we're just sitting and, and listening to what they have to say, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to figure out right here.
Right, but that's what I'm trying to figure out.
You know, if, if, if they're bringing something that's too general, then we need to address that.
You know, that's a good question right there. When we listen to the teachers, does the board go rebuttal back, or are we just listening?
I think we're listening at that point. If we wanna, if there's some information, my opinion is, if there's some information that we wanna know, I think that's a purpose of this today, is say, "We wanna know this at the meeting."
I think that's...
I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea for us to try to rebuttal, 'cause we've got seven opinions here too. If a teacher, if a teacher comes up with something, am I gonna be the one that pipes up an answer, or is Brett gonna pipe up an answer, or is Dean gonna, we might come up with different answers. So, for us to give a good answer, we'd have to, we'd have to talk about that amongst the group, and decide what the group's answer is.
I'm thinking that some of the teachers need to know that we are not gonna necessarily...
Absolutely, oh yeah, yeah.
At the time being, anyway.
We could take some of those things, you know, out of this right here, and then tell them, you know, "Pick your major points, and give us some examples of what you would like to see a superintendent..."
Some clarification on this.
"...of actual actions you would like to see a superintendent take, you know, in making decisions affecting a building, or making decisions on a, on a group, or on how would a superintendent, just like you said, value teachers, you know, what would they do? What would you like to see them do?"
That would give us that actionable thing to ask a superintendent of, you know, I mean, we might have to get together and figure out what the questions are, how we ask them into a superintendent from the information they give us, I mean, we're gonna take that time.
That, that's what I think, is I, I think...
Say that again?
We will have to get together with the information the teachers give us, and be able to formulate questions to ask a superintendent candidate.
That's my whole point too.
I think that'll be at our January meeting, when we look over applications.
That's a good point, because I, I don't know how you guys felt, used those MSBA questions the last time, and I was not a big fan, okay? I was not a big fan of those, I mean, I wasn't actually in here to ask them, but I, I liked the idea there better than I do necessarily, not saying that none of those are good, but...
It's much better to write our own, and we didn't have to use them, but we should!
And this may help that process right here.
I'm in, I'm just saying, we can't meet with the teachers and then go, "Okay, we're done, box marked off, let's move on."
Keep in mind...
We've gotta act on it ourselves.
That process last time, we didn't have to use those questions, that was the board's decision.
Yeah, oh, I, I understand that, yeah.
So, is there, what, you know, I'm gonna have to pin a, a letter back to, I guess, Aaron and Glenn, it's kinda who, are you guys good with me using those as a reference, those two, those two folks?
Yes.
Everybody fine, okay. I'm gonna have to pin a letter back to them, you know, is there a, is there a list of questions? We need to come up with some questions, some, some stuff we want answered from the teachers whenever they come in here, for the, for, when they, when they come, or are we just gonna open it up to them to decide what they're gonna bring?
I, I'd say we let them decide, it's just we need to make sure that, that we're looking for specific attributes to look for in a superintendent. If that's, if that's what they really wanna give us, is attributes to look for, then it needs to be fairly specific, right? So that we can, so that we can develop questions to help identify those attributes in a candidate. That, that's my view.
We all want a good guy, we all want, or a woman...
Yeah, that's right, it's not, nobody wants somebody that hates kids, or any of those things. But I would also say, what we should set, we should also say, you know, how many people can come, and let them figure it out who those, who those people are. If that's six people from the first grade, then that's what it is, I mean, if that's, if they feel represented that way, if it's some bus drivers, and some cafeteria workers, and some, that's not up to us, right?
I like Mac's idea, letting them decide.
Right, but I think we need to tell them how many people, because it can get out of control.
Yeah, I mean, they're a whole bunch of people that are probably all smarter than us, they'll be able to figure that out, and know who they wanna send. And I also agree with Mac that I think more good will come from it than bad, just, just bridging a gap between us and, and the teachers, and right or wrong, it's nothing against Bob, you know, if they didn't feel like their voice was being heard, anybody, us or anyone else, wouldn't like it if we didn't thank our voices being heard. And as long as they're able to, to voice that, and I do agree with Dean, that there needs to be some kinda tangible thing we take from it, and use it in helping us, you know, I like the line you said about attributes that help us find the next candidate. And, but I think more good will come from it than bad. But I do agree with Tony, I don't think it needs to be a willy-nilly hundred people there, because it's gonna be chaotic, and I, and, you know, they'll, they'll figure out who they wanna send. But I don't know if it needs to just be, like, building, you know, do we, teachers from the buildings, or, you know, do they send one bus driver, or...
I don't think they listen, whoever they choose, it's their responsibility to listen to those people, but if you have to sign the bus driver to the elementary building, or the cooks to the middle school, or whatever it is, I just think you just have to, you don't, I mean, you have to put, put them, say, you need to include...
Well, look at how many people showed up to talk to Bob. There was forty or so teachers, or so, and there was one support staff...
One community, yeah.
One community, and how many support staff?
Three, I thought you were...
Three, okay, yeah. So, I think focus should be on, you know, faculty.
Right, I, I believe you're right there.
But I, I mean, I think what he, you know, what Colley's saying, giving the support staff an opportunity to belong to a group, to have a voice and stuff, I don't see any issue with that.
No, I, I don't disagree with that at all.
And I, I think you could say, "Hey, we want two for building, and we want you guys to figure out how to include everybody in hearing their voice, to report to whichever building, or however you wanna do it, let them figure that out." I mean, and then I, if they're coming, you know, then they have a representative or two, or whatever's coming to meet with us, I don't think you need four or five per, I mean, if everybody's getting their input to, to those people, that, that one person, or whoever, if two's gonna even bring it to us, I don't know why you would need more than that to present what they've come up with.
Well, only one person can talk at a time, but, I mean, other than the moral support, they might want some of that, but...
You know, we're all pretty straight-looking.
I do my best, so...
Do you have a feeling, or a good feel for what we're...
Yeah, I do, so, are, are we satisfied with two people from each building? Or we have six people in here? We want three people from each building? Uh, one person, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta pick a number.
I think two's sufficient, myself.
I do too.
What do you think?
I, I, I would think, I mean, that's...
I, I would like to see, if we're picking two, I'm fine with that, I think that's a good number two. I'm hoping that they don't come up with just two buddies that come in here together, you know, if, I guess if that's what it is, that's what, what it is, but I, I hope we don't just have a, a clique of two that were coming, I mean, they need to come together, but they need to be, you know, if you take, you know, I know teachers have got their groups, whatever groups they are with, it's grade level groups, and they get along, and every, you know, but I don't wanna, I'd hate to see that two people from this certain group come, and they've kinda, 'cause they're gonna have their people that they talk to, that talk more freely, you know, more like the, the math people may talk real freely together, but the English people, they're, they're outcasts maybe, you know, and they don't, they don't get, they don't get their voices heard as well. I just hope that when they, when they pick their people to come, that, that they're well diversified.
I think we just need to emphasize that with Glenn and Aaron, I think they can...
Is that, or, or do you agree, do you understand what I'm saying, do you agree?
Completely, we need a good representation of a cross-section of...
But there again, what you're saying, it's just like Mac said originally, you know, that's up to them, that they need to, I think they can figure it out.
Got it.
I'm, I'm still wondering if that's enough to get input from support staff, and, you know, from all facets. Two, two per building is gonna represent the grade level, or the, or, you know, the basic, you know, subject area and grade level teachers, but to get, you know, good input from special ed, and from other...
So, are, are the bus drivers gonna walk up to the elementary and say, "Hey, this is what I feel about this," probably?
Yeah, I'm just thinking if somebody would go to them and say, you know, "I'm, I'm going to the board meeting to talk about superintendent..."
They could, but they did this is sort of our job that we're talking about here, right?
Yeah.
Our job is to be representative of all these people, and if, I mean, the bus drivers oughta feel comfortable coming up to one of us, surely. And all, and I, I get there are different cliques in every building, and that's true from the time they're three to the time they're three-hundred, I guess, but, again, surely they feel comfortable coming to someone on this board... I mean, what we're saying right now is they don't, so they have to have somebody else, uh, that's willing to interact with this board. Um, that's, that's a.
Now, here's my thoughts on, on, on it, you know, the teachers were pretty, um, interested in, in the whole, uh, meeting. They had forty-some representatives, you know, of them showed up, that, that's a pretty good representation from the teachers, I feel. Uh, of course, I would have liked to seen it bigger, but it is what, the support staff had three. It doesn't appear that they were too concerned in what was going on there, or more of them would have showed up. So is it our responsibility, like Dean's saying, to reach out and go find them to see if they have something? Just like with the community, we had one community member show up at the meeting. I don't know if that's good or bad.
It's bad.
Man, Colly might have a disagreement, you know, we could argue, I could argue either side. You know, does that mean that they're uninterested and they really don't care? Does that mean that they think we're doing a great job and we'll figure it out on our own? That's the two arguments to that, so.
I, I did, I'll sit this lap, yeah, I, I just think if you say two per building and you say, you guys are responsible to include everyone.
Yeah.
Everyone that's an employee at, in, in the school, and I think they'll do it. I, 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 I think they'll make sure that they'll get people out.
Some of the support staff may just go directly to Aaron and, and, uh, Glenn and do it that way too.
And, uh, like Dean said, they've always got the option to come to us.
Right. Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, um, so what I'm hearing so far is we want two representatives from each building. I'll just send, I'll, I'll send that out to, to Aaron and Glenn, and I'm sure we've got plenty of people listening today, they already know what we're doing. Send it out to them, they can get it to the staff, um, to figure out who, um, tell them we want to hear specific attributes to what they would like in a new superintendent. We want to hear suggestions and not grievances. We understand that there's probably been a, a break in, in the chain of trust somewhere, and that's, uh, why we're, part of the reason we're doing this, where we can hear directly from them. Um, and just that we want to have some forward-thinking conversations at that point, not looking in the rearview mirror.
Yep, got to emphasize that.
What else? My fault, we don't have food, I turned it down, I turned it down.
I'm in for the next one.
Oh, we are on a budget.
So, I don't want to wait too late on this meeting, um, you know, because we're going to meet in early January to start looking over applications and schedule interviews, probably mid-January it sounds like. What kind of timeframe are you guys looking at? Are we thinking next week? Or early in January? I really don't want to, uh, I feel it's pretty important for all of us to be here, but next week is the blue and gold tournament. I figure some of us will probably go to that.
The girl, girls tournament?
Yeah, so.
Next week's not very good for me.
Do I?
Next week's not very good for me.
Okay.
And where are you going to be going?
I'll be gone later in January, the eleventh.
Okay, later, okay, not early, okay, so.
We've, we've got to look at, you know, we want to give them time to, to get going, so if next week's no good, then we're looking at the first week of January.
Fourth or fifth or third.
When will we be able to get together to digest this information?
I think that's going to be probably, we're looking at January seventeenth is whenever Bob's going to come back and we're going to go over applications.
Right, so we need to do it before then.
Do you think we need to, or is that something we can do?
If we, if we, I mean, if we're not going to put together a list of attributes to go through the applications with, then we're checking off boxes.
Okay.
Well, if you're going to be gone on the eleventh, we almost have to do it that first week of January.
Right.
Third or fourth.
That's, that's what we're looking at sometimes.
And that gives them a chance to come back to school, right?
I come back the third, I believe.
They come the third, yeah.
Could we do it after we meet with them, I mean, immediately after?
Uh, depends on how long the meeting will take, I guess, doesn't it?
We can go all night.
Or we can do it Tuesday, Thursday, or we can do, I, I'm easy, I've got a flexible schedule.
You return too?
For all intents and purposes.
So, do we all look at Monday the third? Wednesday the fifth? Tuesday, there's a, what, what nights, I don't have, I do not have a girls' basketball schedule.
Girls play the third, I just noticed because of the radio, the girls play here the third.
They play here?
Uh-huh, against Thayer.
The boys play the fourth at Licking.
Yeah.
Think the first day back from school, the teachers probably don't want to meet with us.
What about Wednesday?
The fifth?
That gives them a couple days at school.
Yeah.
That gives them that time.
Six.
Wednesday the fifth, at what time?
I'm good, whenever.
Like, one in the afternoon? No, I didn't say, I'm joking.
Like five, six?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, five, five-thirty?
Earlier is better for me.
What time? And what's earlier?
Well, I'm talking five or six, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We're planning on running late.
Yeah, I can make five, I'm there.
Yeah, five.
Yeah.
Do we have it here in this room?
Yep.
That was the fifth, you said?
Yep, the fifth at five P M. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to meet with them then, get their input. What about a follow-up? Do we need, like you said, do we want to meet, do we want to go forth that night? Or give us some time to digest it and then discuss? I mean, we've got a meeting, we've got a regular school board meeting the following week on the tenth. Is that something we want to do that night? To try to digest and put together, or do you, does we want another meeting?
I think you have to have one in point.
The thing, you know, one thing I want you to remember is that, um, when we, when we take this, we've got to come up with our own ideas on what we're looking for also. Just what, just what the teachers want is not the only thing we've got to look at, you know, they, the teachers don't see the financial side of it, which is a big job of the superintendent, the budget side of it, and we, you know, we need to make sure and have our input. We, we've got to think for ourselves some here too, you know, we need to take their, their suggestions, uh, don't take them lightly, but we've also got to realize that there's more to the picture than, than that, just keep that in mind. So, I'm open for suggestions on that.
Well, how big, how, what kind of agenda are we going to have on the tenth?
I, I don't know, I haven't looked, haven't looked at it, yeah.
I'm just, whatever.
I'm still trying to figure out my calendar, five, five-thirty on the fifth?
Five, is five-thirty better? You need a five-thirty, okay.
Well, I mean, on the fifth, if we're doing it at five, and we meet with the teachers, I, I feel like it's all fresh on our, in, in our minds and on our deal, you know, I, I, me personally, I think that'd be a good time to sit down. You know, we've heard what they've said, we've got, you know, the information, and then start laying out.
Our own questions.
Yeah, what we, what we feel about that, that situation, you wait a week or two or whatever, and then you have another meeting prior and then come back to that, I mean, I feel like someone can get lost in that.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I agree with that.
You agree with that?
Well, yeah, because we've formulated our own thought, what, you know, we can misinterpret where, well, if it's fresh in all of our minds, then we can interpret. As a group.
Coach?
Yeah, one meeting on the fifth, I'd say one, that'd be one of three in like twelve days, right? So.
That we know of so far.
Yeah, that's good to think of.
Dean, what are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you find everything, but, okay, all right, all right, I'm good with it too, that's.
Depends on what you have.
I, I, I can see both sides, I can see that it's fresh in our mind and, but us, you know, I guess we can reflect on our own after that.
Yeah, we haven't had time to process it, really think about it.
That, that's, that's the only thing is.
You have a meeting, then you, then you interpret and put it together, what you actually heard, and I can hear one thing out and you can hear another thing. Then you take your few days to think on it then.
We're going to take that information and come back to that seventeenth meeting and apply that information. So I think if anything, you know, is, is triggered in that reflection time, that we really need to see if we need clarification as a group to, you know, did we understand this properly or whatever, I think we could do that probably at that seventeen meeting, couldn't we?
I think so. That seventeenth meeting will probably be a lengthy one.
Is that, I've got that down, or is that ten o'clock?
I think so, we, I don't, we haven't set that yet, but I talked, I talked to Bob and he said he's pretty open to whatever, but, you know, that'll, he'll have to travel here too, so I, I don't want to have it early in the morning either, but.
But we didn't set the time, we didn't.
No, we haven't said, we haven't, we haven't set a date either, we'll do that in Jan, our January meeting, we'll have a motion on that, but that, that's tentatively what we're looking at.
But the tenth meeting is at six fifty, because we have the hearing, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a regular school board meeting. Okay, anything else that need, that I need to convey to them? Dean, are you still plugging in dates and times?
Yes.
I, I think the.
I think if you're playing Candy Crush or what.
I think it's important, like you talked about, the forward-looking thing and the, and, and, put things in a positive light as much as possible, I think you're going to, I think, be more productive.
This, this, you know, this should, in, in my opinion, this should be an exciting time looking for, you know, moving forward for the district, you know, it's always good to get, you know, uh, Mr. Hall brought a lot of positive things into this district and, and made some changes. Not everybody agreed with all the changes, but, you know, it's, it's an exciting time to me to, to look at where we're headed now, you know, what, what's new? What's new for our district? Um, I, I think that needs to, you know, I think everybody needs to be thinking about it that way, not, not, um, sitting around and, and maybe sulking or thinking about what they haven't liked in the last few years, you know, let's, let's, I, I think it needs to be, have a positive spin on it. So, um, all right, so, but one, another question that's been posed and you all have heard, and, and I just, uh, feel that it's time to make sure that everybody, that we get on the same page here, and everybody's heard. I've had calls and, and questions about teachers being involved in the, in the, uh, interview process. You know, Bob told us that it's not a good idea, uh, we've hired them to advise us, they said it's not a good idea. Last, uh, superintendent search, we, or, you know, we had no teachers involved in the interview process, the one before, um, several years before that, when Dr. Hudson was, was hired, I've been told that there were teachers involved in the interview process. So I need to know what the board's opinion is on that, where we're going to go with that. So I have a good firm answer when people are questioning me. Like I said, Bob said, no, it's not a good idea because you're going to have some applicants probably pull out that don't want, uh, you know, when they're looking for a job, they don't want their communities and school districts where they're coming from knowing, uh, that they're looking, that they're, that they're interviewing somewhere else. The more people that are in this room, the greater chance there is of, of information being leaked out. You know, you start inviting two or three or four teachers in here with us, you know, it's just a chance you take, the more people that we put in here. So, um, of course they would have no, even if they were involved in the, uh, interview process, they would not have a, a, an actual vote. That is our job, that is what we have been elected to do, is to hire the superintendent. So, I'm posing that question now to each of you. Are we, are we involving teachers in the interview process or not?
Isn't this what, this is kind of poor? I mean, we're listening to the teachers, getting their questions, they're a little, and.
Getting their input.
We're getting their input on what they're looking for, but we're not getting their input on what they think of potential candidates. There's a, I do see a difference. So digest that for a minute, and then I'm going to let each of you come to what you think.
I like the new thinking music.
One thought that I've got, uh, on the, on the positive side of having a teacher or two involved, is it would be a enlightening opportunity for them to understand, uh, what all is involved in, in picking a superintendent. And, uh, and in the interview process, seeing for themselves the strengths and the weaknesses of various candidates. I mean, that's, but I, but on the, you know, I know that they can't go back and relate to the rest of the teachers that, well, this is what went on, and so.
What was gained in a way.
Yeah.
And I don't agree with the decision that was made.
Yeah, so I, I'm okay with not having one.
That would be one of my concerns there, is we picked this person and they didn't listen, they didn't pick this, you know, and then we.
And you're back to this.
Right, we go down the road and they, they just, they won't listen to us, whatever, for me, it's a, it's a bridge too far, I think that's what we're here to do, I think.
Yeah.
I think we have, you know, there's been some marks missed along the lines there, that's why we're seeing this right here. But, um, ultimately, I think it's the, the board's decision to, to do that, and I, I don't think that that's a, would be an appropriate route for, in my opinion.
Coach?
Um, I agree with that.
You agree with what Matt says?
I think, I think potentially probably more downside than upside.
Scott? You know, I think getting their input in this, you know, in the meeting and why we're here is a good idea, and I think it's going to bridge some gaps, but I never really thought about that until the last thirty seconds, and I don't think very fast. But I, I do, I, I agree with those two guys with that, I do see the downside of, well, you know, we like this guy, they didn't pick that, and I mean, like it or not, it's not the easiest thing, but we, we are representing them, um, and the community, and, and whoever elected us, so I, I'm okay with them not being, do you, were you here, Tony, when they had the, when they did have teachers?
No, I, I, I came in a year after that.
And I, I'm not sure about how the whole process looked, but was that a part of a committee that looked at it, that, that they actually sat in on the interview?
The, what I've been told is they were involved in the interview process, I can't confirm that, I wasn't there, but that's what I've been told.
Seems like I remember that.
Well, I was trying, I was trying to think that too, because I, I, uh.
Oh, where you been? Can't?
Went Hudson County? Who younger than that? No, I didn't even miss school.
That was what, an ag teacher?
Yeah, I think it was an ag teacher, yeah.
Dean?
Yeah, no, teachers should not be sitting in on the interview, that's our job, and we take heat for it, and that's part of our job, is to take that heat. I'll look the board.
Okay, all right, I agree, uh, it's just, it's just that, that, that whole process is going to be a closed, you know, executive session stuff, so what little, what, what information that they could come out of there with, rightfully, they can't go back and share that with anybody. So if they do, if they do go back and they say, well, that wasn't my pick, but they did it anyhow, well, right, there's a breach of confidentiality right up front. So, there, you know, you'd have however many teachers you pick, two, three, four, whatever, I can't envision being any more than that. Yeah, you might make two or three or four happy, but unless they break confidentiality, the rest of the district's going to know what they're going to know, you know, there's no more information that they, that they can, that they, that they're privy to.
I mean, like it or not, the more people that get involved on a deal, usually the worse it goes, been my experience in life.
Yeah, like I said, that, this is, this is what we were elected for. You take the good with the bad, and there'll be good and bad both come of this, I'm, I'm a hundred percent certain. When you have this many employees, um, people involved, you're not going to make everybody happy, and no matter how hard we try, I wish we could, it would make life much easier, but, uh, just the way, just the way it go, just the way it works, you know, the way, the system's set up. So, I will relay that information as well. Anything else tonight? Anything else that I need to know to, uh, pass forward before we, before we meet on the, when is it? The fifth, yeah, we circle that, I'll have to, I'll have to call Dean.
You are a slow thinker, aren't you?
That's my wax birthday, I just relit that. All right, anything else for tonight? Receive a motion to adjourn? By, is that Mac? Who was that?
It was all three of us.
By Adam, all in favor, aye? Aye, and opposed? Very good, thank you guys, my call, Andrew, can you get us offline real quick?
Ooh. This is school, right? This is the first center position, right?
Hey, Andrew, it's Tony. Can you, yep, can you turn this off? All right, that's, all right, thank you.